Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Edley.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
We need a motion to amend the council agenda for this evening.
So. Second.
And roll call. Rob and Charlie.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Edley.
Yes.
Very good. All right, we have a representative from Choice One Engineering tonight with us. Talk about some downtown revitalization. Thank you.
Fantastic. Good evening, council. My name's Jim Morsy. I'm with Choice One Engineering. Apologize about my sore throat. It's rough Saturday down in Columbus. But I'm here tonight to request two resolutions. One is a resolution to enter between Choice One Engineering and with the village of Hicksville in regards to a traffic warrant signal, traffic signal warrant analysis, excuse me, in consideration of removing the traffic signal at the corner of Hyde and Bryan. We ask, we're breaking this request apart only because we can do this in a timely manner. Our engineers have analyzed the intersection. We don't feel that it has the ADT required to justify a signal, and if the village so chooses to remove it, we could provide them the documentation that they can then use with ODOT to remove that traffic signal. So that's the first one.
Who requested this information?
So let me step back. We did, a couple months ago, we were approached by the village to put together a couple of opportunities to enhance downtown traffic and both vehicular and pedestrian. And so what we did was, we took a handful of the projects. We analyzed everything from sidewalk connectivity to any pedestrian walkway or whatever, not just in the downtown, but village-wide. And so that portion, the traffic signal analysis, was part of our overall study. We proposed it to Corey saying, hey, we're not sure if that signal is justified or is required. And so what we're looking at doing is providing you guys the documentation so that if you guys ever chose to take it down, we're not saying you have to, but if you ever chose to, you could take that traffic signal down.
Been there since before the war.
That's.
Which one? We've been there.
We've taken another one downtown when I was administrator. I guess worked with ODOT. We didn't need any.
Yeah.
They told us what we had to do, and that's what we did.
Right. A lot of times, the village would have a clout. What we're doing is giving you the documentation to justify it so that if there was ever an issue with ODOT, you could say, hey, look, we ran the study.
They came down, did their own study, and then they told us, yeah, it could go.
Okay.
Personally, I'd reach out to ODOT and have them do a study.
ODOT.
Me and you guys.
Right, right. And I don't believe ODOT does that type of study any longer. I can have our traffic engineers look into that again if you'd be like.
We can do that.
Fantastic. Yep. And then the second resolution that we requested was to do an evaluation of the main corridor between, along High Street between Main Street and Maple. What we're looking at doing is, we feel that is a prime candidate to receive safety funding as well as TAP funds through ODOT. Each, I guess, pipeline for funding does require certain entities such as estimates, exhibits, and all that. So what I'm here today is just to request permission to move forward with you guys. I can get Corey an agreement that would essentially, within the next month, I could, we can have our survey crews over here. We could fly our drones, get the exhibits that we're successful with on ODOT's front to start moving forward with any type of funding.
What would we do with that block?
Fantastic. I'm glad you asked. What we're looking at doing is revitalizing not only your traffic signals at Main and Hyde, but also looking at doing pedestrian crossing heads. We do pedestrian.
Like Edgerton did?
We would like to maybe do them a little nicer, but yes, absolutely.
Oh, well, if it was just my vote, we'd be saying goodbye to you right now.
Fantastic. But we're looking at doing traffic bumpouts. Essentially, we would be using ODOT funding. If the funds come in the way we're forecasting, it'd either be an 80-20 to 90-10 split between ODOT and the village. But what you're looking at doing is revitalizing the downtown corridor. You got pharmacy, you've got banks, you've got restaurants, all downtown. And this would be able to provide you guys with an opportunity to redo all your curb and gutter, improve your drainage, new sidewalks, again, pedestrian accessibility. We'd go after the curb ramps, the bumpouts. We'd make it look like a true good corridor. Not that it isn't now, but we would be able to improve on the lighting, improve on the streetscape altogether.
With the funding, does that cover the engineering, or would the village be responsible for the engineering portion?
What we would propose at this time is to be able to put together the exhibits and the estimate that would be required to go after the permits. So we would handle all the permit application. We would work with you guys to get all the exhibits to curtail how exactly you guys envision the corridor looking. And then at that point, depending on if you get the ODOT funding, then we'd go down that avenue at that point.
What's the cost for the initial, what you're talking about?
The.
These resolutions?
So for this resolution, it would be $4,800 for the second one.
What's the first one?
I have it in my books. I believe it's $3,400.
So you would do your survey and all those things, and then you'd come back to us with the cost of the project?
Correct. So just to step back a little bit, $3,200 was the first one. And so, again, the way I envision it is if we get approval from a council now, the deadline for the TAP funding through ODOT is on November 30. That's the application deadline. So I wanted to get it in front of you guys sooner than later to start the conversation, to see if there's any interest to move forward. If there is interest, we can send our crews over here. We'd start doing the field information, flying our drones. You'd see some uptick in pedestrian counts. You'd see some uptick in doing traffic counts. We would put together our estimate as far as what we envisioned downtown looking like and how we can improve the corridor.
Nothing that you're doing is going to change the face of storefronts or anything. You're just going to do sidewalks.
Storefronts are private property in our eyes. So, yeah. What we're looking at doing are the physical street, so.
Sidewalks.
Yes, sir. Sidewalks. We're trying to get ahead of ODOT paving program, which is 2029, 2030. So what we'd like to do is even if we find that the subgrade of High Street is subpar, if we still have brick on the lament, you know, a couple of layers deep, we would remove all that, get you a nice, clean roadway, good base, and start from scratch.
I had a quick question. You're talking about Main to Maple, right? But High Street, we're having a lot of, you know, the state came in, what, two years ago and paved kind of to our off-site parameters. We were hoping, it started to get real rough, you know, within, past that point downtown, or within the village. This one pertain to any of that type? Are you just talking the downtown's going to get repaved and restructured, or is it going to extend out farther to meet up with the current state routes?
So what we're trying to do is get our, get the car, or the horse in front of the car, excuse me. But we're trying to get this corridor between Maple and Main, get that completely reconstructed ahead of the time that ODOT paves from, yeah, border to border. So what we're trying to do is kind of fast-track this. Like I said, we have a November 30th on the TAP funds, and then in March, we would go after our, the safety funding through ODOT. And if we're successful on both of those, like I said, our hopes is to get a 90-10 split.
Who's that agency for the TAP?
Both are.
Both ODOT?
Yes, sir. TAP would be your transportation alternative program.
Okay, thank you.
So I struggled with, like, I don't want to do a breakdown. I cannot do a breakdown. Until we get an estimate, I can't tell you like, hey, this is what the costs are going to be to move forward with the process. It's one of those that once the estimate is written, then we can say, hey, look, these items can fall into this pot, which are funded by ODOT, and move forward that way. But it's difficult just to stand here and say, hey, look, you know, you're going to get X amount of dollars for, or X amount of improvements with X amount of dollars. It's difficult to do that.
Currently, who pays for, like, sidewalks up in front of the businesses?
First four feet.
First four meter businesses.
Village end businesses.
So it's like a share?
Right, it goes clear up to the storefronts, so technically it's, on paper it's ours, but we usually do the last couple panels before it's approved.
One quick question. So budgetary-wise, like, let's just say that we would move forward with Resolution One or Two. Turnaround time, and I know there's deadlines for November and March, to actually see anything being done downtown if it got approved? What year are we looking at? Are you looking at '27, '28?
You're asking me, how fast can the speed of government go?
It's slow. There's only one speed.
Yeah, no. So what we do is, we work with District One, Adam Francis over in ODOT District One. We work with them. We're looking at project year 2029, 2030.
Okay.
So, yeah, the TAP and the safety funds do move at a slower rate, but there's a process that you have to move along. That's why we're trying to fast-track to hit this November deadline. That way, we don't have to wait until next year's cycle and hit the October and November for those funds. If we can act now, I feel like we have a better opportunity to acquire those funds.
So would we owe in full upon completion or before the start of the project?
Owe in full, what?
The price. Whatever, 10%.
The $4,800.
No, 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 no. The final project, the 10%.
That would be, that would be during the process of 2029, 2030. Yes. And again, I can't forecast the prices. I don't know what would be owed. I don't know the parameters. That comes down, once your funding is secure, then that's where the embracing. So it's not that I'm trying to hold that from you. It's just, those are one of the unknowns. I apologize.
From past experience, I have another question, because we kind of went down this downtown parking. Do you find with this study and everything and changing the structure, your downtown needs and everything, you're going to pull more spaces away or keep about the same amount? Because we've done this in the past.
Right.
We tried to change it to make it more handicap accessible and to that nature, but we lost so many spots. And our downtown is busy. There's times when you're like, how is it so full? And people are either shopping or in different places. When we found out we were going to lose so many spots, we reversed it and put the spots back in because it was going to take away too many.
Right, right. And that's one of the, those are the components that we discussed with Corey. The objective is not to lose, I can't say we're not going to lose any, because a couple of the bumpouts will change the geometry of your parking spaces. It'll provide you as a pedestrian a safer crossing to get, say, from the bank to the pharmacy or wherever, heading across the street, wherever you're heading. I can't say that you're going to lose a lot, but it'll be very minimal. However, there is also the option that if you want to go to parallel parking, which I know that's a forbidden word, we're not allowed to say that in here, but that one, you would cut your parking in a third. And I don't see that as being reasonable. So to be honest with you, we didn't even propose that. But in ODOT's eyes, we're going to say, hey, this is one of the options that we would like to consider, but then we'd give a page full of reasons why we don't want to proceed with that route. So what ODOT goes after are, how much have you evaluated this? And if we're able to say, hey, here's three exhibits that we're going to move forward with, and this is why we like Option A, this is why we don't like Option B, and don't like Option C, it gives you better clout than just say some village coming in saying, hey, we want money to do this, and it doesn't look like, you know. We've had greater success with putting together a plan.
I'm not stepping on your toes, boss, so don't take it this way. We had ODOT come in and do a study. They wanted us to go to parallel parking. That didn't work. They wanted us to go with backward parking. So is keeping our parking angle going to fly with them?
So honestly.
We fought with them.
It is a very legitimate, very legitimate question. And I cannot tell you that we would steer away from them, because again, like I said, you need to show those elements when you're applying to ODOT to make it seem as if, yeah, we saw your webpage. We understand what the voting criteria for rewarding these funds are. We want to make it seem like we're doing our due diligence and so forth. You, I will, here's the, you will see an exhibit, if we move forward with this, you'll see an exhibit showing reverse angle parking, because ODOT, ODOT is excited about that for safety, for pedestrian safety. It's just, it's just one of their matrix. And if we can show an exhibit showing that and showing the impact that we can have, it might give us better clout for receiving funding.
Everybody in this town jaywalks. And they teach it, they're in grade, that they teach that for jaywalking. And, you know, nobody's going to walk from that corner halfway down the block to get into one of those crossings.
Right.
Trust me, I've lived in this town.
Right.
Seventy-some years, and they don't do it. And what I've seen from Edgerton, and they lost seven spots each place that they did it, and it, I think we're spinning our wheels, even talking about this. Everything's just fine up there.
We're looking, we're looking further than just.
What do you want to change, Corey?
I mean, it needs definite upgrades down there. Sidewalks could be replaced. Got a lot of electrical issues under the sidewalks. All those bolt pits up there, they flood. You know, we're changing the connectors out, you know, once a year. It's old. That stuff is old.
Probably about 20, 25 years?
It was 2001 when I first took over. It was a night, man. Sorry. I mean, it was, but it's doable. And I know this stuff needs changed out.
But that's why he's here to explain this more in-depth and thorough to you guys, rather than be coming to you and say, I'd like to do this. That's what he's here for, Mark, to have this conversation.
An apply for a grant program for, right? Is there any grant money available for this?
So again, if we're successful, which we feel this project would be a strong proponent for, if we're successful, it'd be a 90-10 split. On that opt, on that 10% that you guys would be on the hook for, there are grants out there. There are funding sources. Yep. There's opportunity. And again, we wouldn't, we wouldn't like leave you guys high and dry. We'd help work with you guys to move forward.
You have a thing I'll say on the traffic light. I guess we should change the timing, because sometimes you sit.
Sure.
But if you take that down, I hope there's a cop car sitting up there constantly, because you're going to have a reach track from edge of town all the way up here to this corner with no stops. And it's bad enough now. At five o'clock.
On a regular day.
Slammed. Yeah, I know.
They're doing it every morning. We sit there and count them. Although, there'd be fifteen, twenty people running that.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to have traffic backed up on Bryan Street both ways.
Yeah. My biggest concern would be time-wise, because Bryan Street, the busiest time of the year is summertime, when all the baseball, softball programs are going on, all the games and football. I mean, you're going to get Fridays, but you normally want a traffic study for a couple of weeks, maybe.
Right.
And we only have a home game every two weeks, so you may or may not catch the home game, but the park's really busy in the summertime and doing the study at this time of year, you're not going to do, I guess, you're not going to get those accurate results.
I got you. Through our discussions, we felt that when school was in session, that would have been the better opportunity. That's why we kind of dragged our feet as far as proposing that. But, yeah, you feel summer would have been more.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for that light, for sure, because everyone turns in and out of there to go down the park for baseball, softball, junior high, you know, high school all the way down to Little League of Pee Wee, so.
Got you.
And the lights need changed out if we keep them, so I'm not disagreeing with that.
They're old. Didn't match it, for sure. But I think timing would alleviate some. You can sit there forever, wait for a light to change.
When you sit in there and wait forever, if it's not there to get out, you know, Todd, not his driveway, he has to take it with the light.
Yeah, from a safety standpoint, I'm not really in favor of taking that light out.
No, absolutely not.
I just think that all it's going to take is one fatality if it gets taken out.
Well, look at how many wrecks we have up there now. Wouldn't it work?
Right. It just slows down traffic, you know.
Did that, do you remember the crash study that we did? Because that intersection, that wasn't all.
We have the documentation. I didn't bring the crash study with us, but yes, we did a little of the initial.
Of course, Hyde and Main was the most.
Right.
I see. ODOT still sent like every other year. They used to do a downtown study. They'd show how many wrecks were at Point A, B, C.
Right.
There were a couple of years they'd send it.
Yeah, that information's available online. We have access to that. We shared it. And Corey was actually able to get us more through the villages, the crash records and all that stuff. So, but yeah, we evaluated all of them, so.
I've always been surprised this isn't even a part of this area, but by the school, there's not a light out there, because it's a free-for-all.
ODOT.
We had a study.
I would rear end it out there.
We had a study done by, outside, I worked with the school, we had a study done by an outside company, and we even, we had cars parked along the road there for the longest time, at morning drop-off and afternoon pickup. We got ahold of a company, they put cameras on, or I guess, I guess they counted vehicles.
Yep.
Down by the gas station, and at that time, we only had one entrance and one exit of the school, and they kept track of everything. They gave us options for trying to move traffic better. Going 18 was the second inlet, not by that, took care of all the problems.
When they made the turn.
Oh, it's busy, but it's, they just lined up all the way up.
Well, I think we see a lot more traffic than we did 20 years ago. I mean, I play Frogger crossing, jaywalking High Street crossings, so.
We've never lost anybody up there, don't we? We've never lost anybody jaywalking up there. Way to go.
Great horse.
Say, way to go.
Knock on wood.
Not yet. Well, you can jinx that, so.
So what do you guys think? You want to, your thoughts on this?
I'm okay with number two.
I'm okay with that, too.
Same here.
Yep, here.
Well, if you're doing the two downtown traffic lights, would that also cover the speedy mark traffic light? Would you have to add a couple of that? We'd be adding money for that one. Would you replace all that?
Add these new poles, and wood poles are starting to come.
Well, I mean, like, they're.
They're studied, they're studied.
The analysis. Yeah, I would have to check.
If we're not interested in getting rid of the light, it needs upgrades. Shut it down for a while, put some broil bags over, put some stop signs up, see how it works.
Would that turn into a four-way stop or just a?
No.
It'd be like when we took up, down there on Arthur.
From this building.
Wouldn't the village have opportunity to determine if you could do a four-way there or?
I'd rather a light than a four-way.
When we did this one on that state highway, they said no, because you'll have more wrecks. We had to put up, the cross traffic doesn't stop or whatever their signs say on either side of the state road.
I'm okay on Resolution Two.
Lucy needs to adjust his money to cover the second, third traffic light. Now, I'm not saying, yeah, we'll throw an extra $4,000, but if that $4,800 wasn't going to cover that traffic light, I think it needs included as part of the other two traffic lights, so you don't have the same situation we got now.
But if we're not, if we're not in favor of removing that one, why don't we do a study on it?
Because.
No.
I think there were made upgrades.
Where, yeah.
Where you can.
Include that with the upgrade.
Brilliant.
So if they're all the same, so.
So with that, you want him to go back and add whatever he would?
Can you find out what the price would be with adding that one?
I'm just going to speak up ahead. We'll evaluate that with our old study. Yeah, I'm not going to add. I mean, that's still within the corridor.
What else can we add?
Like, my traffic guys really don't like to know. But, yeah.
So would this be written into, not the $4,800, but future project, next year's budget, or like 2029's budget? How do we move forward with that?
I think it depends on the project. It's.
If we get money or what.
Depends on project cost.
Right.
But.
We should know about a year in advance.
I won't have. Yeah, definitely, so and so.
So if you don't have the money next year, then.
The numbers he gives us are just.
I mean, I can budget it.
Well, you figure he's still going to be looking for safety funds, too, and that deadline's in March.
Right.
So he's not going to know by budget, this budget year anyway, so.
Right. My game plan is to go back tomorrow morning and say, hey, look, they gave us the green light to move forward, pursuing TAP and safety funds. Our team will start putting together the exhibits. This time next month, if you guys want me to, I could come back with the exhibits. I'll show you the estimates, and we'll have, we'll have more, I guess, more possibility to discuss our options moving forward and show you what options are out there and where we, hopefully, we'll have more solidified dollar amount for it, yes.
Well, I think your question, let's wonder, we would be spending it, didn't you say it'd be like 20, 29?
29, 30 would be the construction.
Plenty of time to put in the budget.
The budget, yes.
Yeah, otherwise, I'm.
I just want to make you have plenty of time between now and then.
Cost. No, because wouldn't ODOT?
ODOT can't lock them funds. If asphalt goes up 50 bucks a ton.
It's part of the estimating. It's part of the estimating. We have to factor in for inflation and all that. Yeah, it's 15, 16%.
Sidewalk to school, that was a couple of years in advance, and they stuck to it. So I'm okay with number two.
Will somebody make a motion? Let's get going.
Cool.
I'll second your motion with number two. Second, roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Moving on with council here, we got the minutes from our August 18 meeting. Any motion to approve their.
Second.
Roll call.
Edley?
Yes.
Martin?
Same.
Miller?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Got approval of Bill's list?
Only Ohio asphalt paving is that for all of Hook Street? Like, that's the LE balance?
I give that, that's everything. That even includes up to Defiance Avenue that's not paid yet.
Vernon Nagel's that last payment?
That is our last payment, yes.
With J.D.Y. excavating, was that just bringing dirt in, or did he actually, I know you guys did a lot of work.
That's, that's the trucking, that's the dirt, and then his time, stuff to give it all crowning. That's, that's the trucking, that's the dirt, and then his time stuff to give it all crowning.
Do you think those need to be any more improvements done in that field or?
Uh, yeah, I got, I got quotes for fencing, our backstop, I haven't really looked at it, but they're, it's pretty much A. Uh, I think the backstops all the way to the dugouts, we were gonna go like ten feet higher, since it would be used for older kids. You don't wanna, team put all backs up. The one estimate I've gotten so far was sixteen thousand. That's all new poles and mesh, all right. Uh, we are meeting, is it just next Tuesday? With the, the finance mentor parks down there and gonna have them look at that and that parking lot. I've got some numbers to redo that parking lot and have it striped. See if we can get them to help pay for some of this.
Software solutions. Software support, which brings up.
My hand will pay.
Okay. Make a motion to pay bills.
Second. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
If I could make a quick note on that, actually, Defiance Cutting Park Board actually called us to kinda tour the park, check things out, so.
They sent them an email.
Yeah, they sent them an email and they. Besides to come over here and. All right, uh, parts of commissions, I don't believe any of those met. Uh, we have council committee reports.
Um, finance met, discussed thinking options. Anyone wanted to see, I do have some of the information here, just passing along to you guys. And then you can see in there, um, what our recommendation as a committee was in terms of taking that alone versus paying in full.
Personnel met, main thing was, uh, was called on by the police department. They had a lot of concerns on their, uh, their software, their computers, IT issues, and Jen Carrier had a really nice list here of all the issues they're having, uh, you know, the current company, one man show to the backup devices, to the server, to emails and computers, so. There's a long list that we did ask Jen if she could possibly reach out to, and the company was called E K and/or S M T A and see what they had to offer for storage for, uh, a lot of email and pictures. I know the police department had a lot of pictures and video that pick up a lot of space. And, uh, Jen was familiar with a company called E K, I don't remember the last part of it, but, um, she was gonna reach out to them to see what price would be. We had personnel meeting on it, kind of more finance in a way. Uh, we told her to bring back pricing so finance committee can look at it more contractual service for, uh, future budgets, so she was gonna work on that. I didn't think she'd have time to get numbers back by today, but she'll work on before budget, so.
It was quite the list. Um, how frequently do we upgrade their, like, laptops and stuff? Uh, do they just write that into their budget?
What do they do? Just tell briefcase come in and change things out?
The entire village got new computers last year because of Windows eleven, or for all Windows can.
I thought she said, I thought Jennifer said they, none of theirs were eleven.
No, no, there's our, there's our eleven. It was just.
The ones in the car.
Oh, okay.
Wasn't her, and they were looking at getting new Turkish ones, is what Drew Ford told us.
The four-year-old models?
The brand new ones that they got, they said they were dated and they were four years old, and they're way oversized for what they would ever need.
Inside their office or their cars?
Inside the office.
And we just got those last year? Was, was this the Bob, the IT guy, was this his recommendation?
Lot of issues with passwords and being able to get on stuff. Jen takes home a hard drive and locks it up every night at her house, brings it in. It's not like it happened before her too, so.
The auditors require that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
They require her specifically or?
Someone. Take it off-site.
Okay.
Well, now that everyone knows what that off-site location is, what's the point?
Well, they'll tell you.
Well, the servers, she said the backup servers, five footers, that's put away from the existing servers, so there's no, something ever had a fire, they lose everything.
Exactly.
Oh, so it's fire now, that, that they're worried about?
The fire parts.
We have nothing in the cloud?
No. Police, police have to download all their emails and same one flash drive every Friday.
And some of the police, I'm not familiar with all of theirs, but they have some of their stuff that goes in the cloud.
Got a lot of legitimate complaints.
Yeah, I.
I asked her for the list, so did you want me to be able to get it all, and I'm glad she said that.
Yeah, I was glad she said that as well. I was not, um, aware that there was this much, and I feel like some of this needs to be addressed.
The email servers have, like, limited storage, so they're constantly having to go in and reallocate space or delete space to that right there.
Yeah, and you bring one computer on here, like, let's say on their desk, and all of us go up to that computer, we all log in the same. I can send an email, write down Rob's senate. They, they don't have their own user login, their own user password. It's all, they all use the same computer.
Um, these two companies that they're reaching out to is the hopes that they'll be able to bring us up to speed in terms of our IT?
Yeah, we didn't know what S M T A had to offer, whether it come to the computers itself, uh, but the storage, cause they have a lot of storage on, on site that they offer. I don't know what they charge, but the E K was one that Jen's worked with when she was with the county, I believe, and they have a, a help line, a chat line, everything else, they can, they do everything. When they bought all their computers a year ago, their own department had to put all their software and everything else on the computers. And this company, they, they do everything, they sure, yeah.
Um, is the idea that they'll write this into next year's budget or are they hoping?
We're hoping.
Okay.
Yeah, but then it also becomes, is it just the police department switching over or where should be Village, Villagewide? I don't know what Cory's is, I'm not sure what Cheryl's is or EMS is.
We have our own server, they have their own server, so the police have a lot more security and things that we don't, we don't need, we don't have, that they have to have them.
Fire, fire and EMS still share a computer though, don't they? Log in and everything, use the same one? They don't have to have anymore?
They have four. They're.
Fire has their own computer and I have mine.
So you have a computer, so if, let's just say Abby or Hannah or any of them need to get on there, do you guys all use the same username and login, password?
So, um, there's two computers in the, in our radio room. The main computer that I use, uh, has one general login, and then the computer that Bob sits at, that's supposed to have everybody, but I think it's just one general login there.
So, cause we had this whole issue come up when we have a medical director issue, and whether or not Kramer's seen the email or Elwood's seen the email or whoever's seen the email, because it just went there, whoever opened it, opened it, and whoever closed it or deleted it, deleted it.
So the way, the way it's supposed to work though is that anytime that we do a password change or anything, we have to notify her. We have to give her our login and, and password to Cheryl, so that way if something happens, she's got it. So, but yeah, right, as far as, uh, emails, uh, we have a separate email from what Fire does and, and they have, they have two computers, we have two computers, um, but each of us has our own, I mean, they have their login, we have ours.
But all your EMS people all have the same login?
Yeah, it's all under one.
Yeah.
The second computers were trying to, that's what this purchase for.
Cory, do you feel like you have enough space with your computers?
I think so. Well, I'm not on a server, nothing online. But I guess gotta, it's hard to guide them.
So we're just waiting on numbers from Jen.
All righty. And I know about the, um, job performance on me personally with the personnel committee. Um, I mean, more happy to, to talk to you guys in executive and or, you know, we've discussed some of these things in the past, so.
How can we do that in executive? You're not, we, we don't employ you.
Then you can bring it up now if you want.
No. No, if we can't do it in private, don't, we're not gonna do it. I'm not gonna try to, try to shame anybody or do anything like that. Why can't we do it in executive?
Cause we don't employ him. So it's not personnel.
But it deals with department.
Betterment of the community.
That nature, so.
For the betterment of the.
Is that on the list?
Add your list.
No.
Personnel.
It's not personnel. You can't fire him.
I hadn't that. I just put that on the table. If you guys wanna talk to me, I'm more happy to discuss some of these things, and if not, then I'll kick you to your questions and concerns and try to do better and would be more direct to address those issues. Moving on, we have administrative report.
I don't really have much. I did, uh, re-interview an employee, or a potential employee, uh, Brayden Vogel for the wastewater department. Had zero applicants for that department. But he had applied a couple of years ago for the village and he was one, down to the last two, and, um, reached out to him. Wasn't interested at first. Couple days later, he called me back, came in, uh, interviewing, um, offering the position. Um, you know, barring your guys' approval. Um, he'd come in as a grade two laborer at twenty-one nineteen, six months probation, obviously pending physical and drug screen.
You said former employee.
Well, I, I misspoke.
Former camp.
Former.
Okay, cool.
So I guess I'm asking for their recommendation.
Recommendation.
Hire Brayden Vogel.
Great. All right, we'll do that recommendation.
He got a, uh, he getting felony rating, doesn't he?
No, even if he did, we can still hire him. We have, he's got nothing on the books here. There's nothing.
Maybe you just have to replace him a lot.
Potentially.
I mean, he's okay with the rate of pay and insurance, so if we don't get another.
If he. Sure, if they're hired, they're probably, Cheryl printed some stuff out, um, during that, during the process, and we went over the, the insurance. He's old.
Right. Yeah, obviously understands the, the job and what it entails and being on call.
I mean, not to a T, but yes.
Make a change, so. Okay, I made the recommendation.
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second on it.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Eggly? Yes, Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
When's they gonna start?
I like to usually start people at the beginning of a new paper, which is tomorrow, but it'll probably be end, end of the week. So. And then with, with our zoning slash compliance officer, had a couple of interviews and I'm hoping some more people will yet apply for that. Uh, so I've kind of been stepping in to try to feel my way through that department. It's easier said than done. Yeah, and then I did send over the EPA bio-solids inspection, so you guys can kind of get an idea. We talked about the de-watering, uh, press. This is kind of an idea of an idea of how important it really is, especially if we're looking for growth in the community.
That is in the works now, isn't it? The press itself.
Uh, I've got a price.
Yeah.
Engineers, that's around a million twenty for it.
And, uh, did the engineer or you or anybody, are we looking at any grants or anything? So it could happen.
It's, it's possible, yes, but if we, if we bomb on these grants, then.
Then no.
I'm interested in moving forward and we'll have to get really creative.
And even with the water press, though, we'd still have to haul stuff out, right?
You would still haul it out, yes, but you would have a drier, they call it like cake material.
Uh-huh.
So you wanna, you wanna, uh, a lower, uh, percentage of moisture in it, obviously. So you can get more sludge out and each dumpster add.
That's why, you would explain that last time. I thought that's why.
Put, put the enormous send out in hay truck load of liquid. Once it's dry, you could have four of those loads in one load.
So it'll reduce our cost to haul it out.
Yeah.
It would, into that, we won't, we won't be weather dependent. I mean, you guys seen the photos, those drying beds, that's how that stuff dries. So if it starts to dry and it looks good, and we get an inch and a half rain, sometimes we're starting over. That's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Cory. Any questions for Cory? Appreciate that. Uh, solicitor report, Avery?
I reviewed the amended ordinance that was sent out to the animals.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it was brought up briefly before, and I also, with the adult animals, because what is the definition of an adult? Um, and there is no definition at all animal in Ohio, I revise, so, so I think that's might be the, yeah. Adults are the other map of statutes.
I guess my, I wanted to bring this to full council again because they've had, you know, died on the table. You know, what are the things that we need to get in this ordinance to get it to pass? Or at least to be brought back, because we got into a side conversation about dog kennels and breeding dogs and what we were trying to do with this ordinance was not allow moved animals in the village. Because as it's written now, you can have, as long as you're a hundred feet away from dwellings, horses, cattle, sheep. Which is a few properties that could do that, but it's, it's already been done, or at least it was recently, and I have received some phone calls, um, of people that are potentially interested in moving in town, that they wanna bring their.
Poedowns.
Yeah, their poedowns.
Bring their little goats in them?
It's like, and we could. We could work on this here, or we can just have it where you get to be zoned agriculture and move forward, like some other smaller towns, villages do, in order to even have a chicken. I mean, some of them, you have to be zoned agriculture.
Yeah.
Go with that.
Well, I mean, yeah, you don't want someone bringing in a whole farm into town.
I thought we had it down to five or six. You could have six chickens, but we all, we all kind of wondered why six was the magic number.
It was kind of, I think, an average of what, uh, the previous zoning officer found, you know, some, um, only three in some, you know, he looked in the neighboring result.
So is that six, they have to be a hundred foot either way, right?
From a neighboring dwelling. Yeah. Another occupied dwelling, correct.
Oh, it could be that, it could be closer than a hundred foot to your own dwelling?
Yes.
Okay.
You're at your back door.
But it's six, no matter what? Right? Am I reading it correctly?
They can't have more than six chickens.
Rabbits and poultry, yep. Six total. The cats and dogs don't apply to this.
Correct. I, my question was really like, how many people out there does this apply to and?
Six properties maybe that could.
You're surprised.
I don't know, we, we, I went out garage down and I found several, and I was like, oh, I didn't know they had this. I didn't, so I know they exist, I just.
Some people have them in garages. And you know, he'll never know it.
You hear those roosters, they're hard to hide.
Well, yeah, cause this has excluding roosters.
Yeah, that way we don't have, you know, roosters growing. Which we got, you know, roosters now.
It just seemed like another ordinance that it's gonna be hard to keep track of the six approved animals in another ordinance that's not gonna be potentially enforced. That was my concern, so I'm in.
Main thing is though, Eric, is, it's there. If we have a severe case, there's something to go after.
Well, whose can you drag, what's approved and what's not?
The zoning officer.
They got seven one day and six the next day.
Well, this.
This ordinance doesn't start until January first.
Yeah.
As it's written, so.
We talked about the whole, what if they already have ten now, and they're, they're pets, or is anyone grandfathered in?
I mean, I have no issue in increasing the number to like twelve. That was just a number that, like I said, the previous zoning officer had, but. You know, the same way, like with the permit, the application, twenty-five dollar application fee for a permit, once you fill that application out, then that compliance officer or zoning official will go to that property, and if it says six and you got nine, well, you're not getting your permit. You get your animals.
So as long as you don't apply for a permit, then they don't know you're there, so you don't have to.
And till you get. Until you get caught again, and then you talk to the judge.
So if they're in their house, do you have the right to search their house?
In their own, we don't have, no. And we don't even go onto a property unless we have a uniformed officer with us, unless it's the front door.
I still have ordinance violations from two years ago that are still not taken care of.
Yeah, what?
Ordinance violations that I emailed two years ago that are still.
The same one?
No. Junk vehicles, non-titled. I've sent pictures, figures, still there, see them every day. You know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It's in the courts. It's title transfer, it's a death in the family. Still there, a year later.
You don't want to put in on it.
So we're not going to enforce them, I mean, why are we, that's the thing.
Well, it's not that we weren't, it's just we were told that we couldn't. But we had spoke to her about this as well, and she'd just be, like she said, that'd be just another offense on them. And it's nothing that I'm, I mean, I'm not worried about it all. I'll go back on the path and they can come back and explain it, but now it can be a little harder to access, which it's just a simple call to PD and scheduling the time to meet with an officer to go.
Jerry took that part of the letter he left, it's because it couldn't be them to go with him.
Yeah. Uh, I wouldn't say that's all of it.
No, it's not all of it.
Yeah, some of it, it was. I mean, I think his last few months, like Officer Franz, the daytime guy, was always really, really good at it. You know, but if he wasn't there, then it might just be the chief working and that wasn't happening then.
Well, it's like we had fifteen people on duty.
It's no shade at, it's no shade at those guys, but depending on what's going on for them for the day, something might be a little more pressing than a junk vehicle.
Proportional issues.
Or what is going to happen.
Yeah.
But also with the approved, I don't know, I feel like there's a lot of ways around this because, I mean, that's my job is to think over how people get around it. Six approved animals, what if someone has, okay, six rabbits, how are you going to differentiate if they also have three stashed? They're like, oh, I have these ones approved, you know, and there's stashed ones and I just.
Soon as you leave, they put them back out with the rest of them.
Yeah.
Like in law school, I had a cat in my apartment and I shouldn't have, I just hit her with my lamina this morning, like.
We hired a fella, hey, that happens.
That's why I don't have.
She's trying to rehabilitate.
Yeah. I mean, but I do think adult needs to come out, because how do you differentiate between one type of animals and adult?
Well, my thought is with Avery being on board, you know, maybe have her take a look at this ordinance to see what she thinks would be more binding and.
I can dig in some of the other, more similar ones as well.
Well, for me, I mean, for, it's just going to need enforced, then there's going to be a pain in the neck.
And you're going to have to enforce it all around then and stay consistent, or else you're going to have some of these people have any of this all to them. Let it go down.
Next ordinance was twenty-five sixteen.
Those table?
Table for, yeah. What, the second ordinance?
Which one? First one's just first reading anyways.
Yeah.
So it's not tabled, it's just first reading. It's first reading.
No vote, right?
No, first reading, you don't vote on what's the emergency.
You wanted to come back to the second reading?
Sure. How first readings are supposed to be to read, and the second one's to do a little bit more research, the third one's to ask a lot of questions. That's what, when you go down to Columbus and you go to that class, that's what they tell you.
We're all up to fourth one, alright.
I know. Nothing's been changed, but you only have a zoning guy that's hired.
I don't have a fifteen. We have a sixteen. We got a ten and a sixteen.
So, did we have two copies of it in the packet? Okay.
Yeah.
They look, oops, you only need one above the line.
But we did already have the first reading, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it was supposed to be an emergency, right?
We did three readings, didn't we?
That's not to be.
I thought we did three readings and never, never got far enough along the boot.
You're talking about the second.
Investment, obviously.
Yes.
I thought you were still wanting it to.
No, we're moving to the resolution twenty-five sixteen.
Well, there were several ones that who gets.
There you go. Is this a reading or are we voting?
Yeah, it's our second reading.
Okay.
Are we going to read it?
Who's going to read?
I'm going to read it.
You're going to read it.
Just ahead of work.
Resolution to amend the investment policy of the village picks for the.
Good.
But I know what they were amending, it's crossed out already for you, but that would be on page three, yes.
Now we're up to department heads.
Chris has nothing.
The only way, you can tell by looking at it.
From August first to August twenty-fourth, we had forty-one calls. From August twenty-fifth to August thirty-first, we had twenty-two. So we ended up with sixty-three. On Sunday, I let a few of you know that we're kind of busy. We ended up with six, so we didn't break our record. Thank you, Ron. But, no, I had sent Ron a text and he said, I hope you don't break your record. Thanks. Fifty-nine medical, four, four fire, forty-one transports, forty-six calls were here in the village, four in Hicksville, three in Mark, two in Farmer, and seven in Melford, one unit related with Ant Work Fire. On September sev- why do I have to say August? On September seventeenth at seven PM, we are going to be having a first responder mental health, mental health awareness meeting. This is called Project eighty-six. This was brought to me by one of our EMTs. In today's world, first responders, I think, our mental health takes a big hit. We don't talk about things, because, you know, we just don't. So we're having a meeting, not to talk about anything, but just to kind of get an awareness of what we should be doing when, whenever we have certain types of calls. So we're going to be having that next door, if anybody from here would like to join as well. We are also inviting area responders as well.
What was the date?
What was the date?
September seventeenth.
At seven?
At seven PM, yes. Next Monday, Felix and Isaac start their paramedic classes. Two weeks from today, the EMTB classes start. We are now covering the high school football games, and I am getting ready to have Hannah leave on the Friday leave on September twenty-fifth, not that she doesn't go earlier. So we're going to have plenty of open spots. I'm also, during the month of October, going to have somebody out for a week, possibly two, at that time. Next week, I am meeting with someone from Dart County concerning some grant monies for classes. He's, this was brought to me by a mutual friend, and this guy has gotten, as every time he's applied, he's always got, he's always got his money. So I'm going down there and we're going to be putting in for, for grant money. Finally, I'd like to add two people. We have Mackenzie Gratz here. She is a basic, she currently works at Parkview, but she's also in a paramedic class in Ivy Tech. So she is here with us. And then Kyle Racker. Kyle moved out to the old Christmas tree farm, and he's out there. He was on Ant Work for eleven years, and he is a basic as well. So that's.
Or is he just going to live in the.
Fort Wayne. Fort Wayne. And we've talked about, when she interviewed, we did talk about, you know, her coming over and times and things like that, and she's more than willing to put in some, some time for us. I tried to do, I'm trying to keep an eye on what we've got going on now, because some of the, some of our part timers are unable to pick up when we need them to. And the four people that I mentioned at the last council meeting, they have been very gracious to do their right ones with us now. So they are on track to all be approved. I mean, all be released by the thirtieth of this month. So again, keeping an eye on the future, you know, we're losing Bob at the end of the year, so just trying to make sure that we maintain the coverage that we already have. I think we've, we've done a great job over the past year, considering that we were given a whammy last May, and I think we've increased our numbers to the point where, after I put these two on, I'm going to start a waiting list, so, for people. So, and that is all I have.
I want to commend you with the last couple of months, you and the rest of the people have done a great job of, we haven't had to call Sherwood. Lifting assistance has been more than, I mean, there's at least three or four of them, they call in every time you have to have it. You've done a great job the last couple of months without having to have any assistance from outside.
Just, just to give you an idea of what Sunday was like, we had four calls in two hours. One of our, one of our squads had just gotten back and was called right out, and one of our other squads was actually coming back from Bryan when they got turned around to go back north. So four calls in two hours.
Now, is that legal, when you put a chair in there and make people, the next patient sit there and wait?
Hmm, probably not.
You've done good, Bruce.
Thank you.
Is it Casey, right?
Mackenzie.
Mackenzie, okay, I'm sorry, Mackenzie.
That's okay. And we know how you are with names.
You're basic, or do you have, are you advanced and then going into paramedics?
I'm just basic right now, but I'm currently in paramedic school.
Okay. How far along are you in, along in the program?
Just two weeks.
Oh, two weeks.
So how does that work, not medical at all? So do they skip advanced then, or how? So Cheryl, when you talk to Cheryl, one time there was like a process in the handbook or something, where you're supposed to be a basic for so long, and advanced for so long, and then paramedic, which normally you never had a paramedic.
So, so no disrespect, but I've never seen that in the handbook.
You got this.
But, but, at the same time, because of finances, those two have kind of took it upon themselves to pay for themselves. If they do that, not, not, not a lot I can do about it.
So neither, neither one of them are using any grant money or anything, they're both talking about.
They're using, they're using the grant money that they, like Felix, he got some grant money, not from us, but from, from the Fed. And then Isaac is also, Isaac is also coming to, trying to work with four county on how to get his paid, so, so. And from the gentleman that I talked with, he said that the paramedic class was not covered. However, I've been told that it is covered, so I'm still trying to get that, you know, trying to figure out that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We need to make a.
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation for Mackenzie to dial the young staff for EMTs.
Make a motion.
Second?
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
And lastly, please, if any of you have a question or anything like that, please, please come, come see me or, or call me. I'm always available, so.
Nick, Bruce?
Yep.
This is your report.
I have your phone status and catch summary. The August intertext and utility report, some extra. We'll be working on our cybersecurity policy that has to be updated and by the end of this month. I was looking at the national prescription fall, fall take that day, and I put in my zip code and I can take it to Williams or Pauling County, what happened in finance, they need to take my appeals. And I have a motion that I need for you to approve, I gave you copies of it. It has a local government fund, six point nine percent, which is the same thing, it's supposed to go less per year. And the dollar amount that it's going to be, so this is not a resolution or an ordinance, it's just a motion to accept it. And if you don't accept it, then you can go to the budget meeting and tell them why you want to have more money. And if you don't want to, then make a motion today to accept it.
What do you recommend?
You're not going to get any more money.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll second. Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Everly?
Yes.
Cheryl, you got any rates for insurance changes? You said August twenty-eighth. We're going to.
The entrance is eleven point nine percent. The most it is for, the highest one would be for an individual taking the five, standard five, which is ten dollars extra. All the rest of them are less than ten dollars.
You going to give those the finance sometime or anybody?
Yep. I want to remind you guys about the health here is on this weekend, I believe, the fifth and sixth, yes, is approved for everybody. And on the twenty, no, the eighteenth of September, the aware people are going to be here, and anyone who wants an appointment, aware is free. It's part of your insurance, part of Medical Mutual. And it has to do with bones and joints and all this sort of stuff, where you go to a chiropractor. And this is where you, it's online, but they also do it onsite. So they're coming to here for the whole day, and they're giving out appointments, forty-five minute appointments here in the council room for them to work on if you have a problem with your knees, elbows, shoulders, whatever.
All those problems with all of you.
Kind of all of you.
You get a process check?
I'll check it for you, bud.
Just a reminder, budgets are due September twelfth.
Like, any question for Cheryl? I just had a couple quick, I signed up to do the certified public records training for, have everybody covered, but Cheryl says I don't have to do it, so we don't have to do it this year, because I did it last year, right?
How did you?
No, it's like three and a half, oh, you took the one, right? So I think we're in compliance on that. I know it's something that augurs always ask about, but I had a quick email here later this afternoon with the Keller property and the Verizon tower. According to the survey, of course, it's got sent back to American Tower to have them okay the road relocation, but then Michael Wall and Brian want to move forward with getting the contracts re-updated. Michael had re-emailed the kids, said between us and the CIC and then Keller and the CIC. So he asked if we could go ahead and get those finalized, updated, done, that way when the approval comes back, they can move forward with construction, so get work on that. So I said I would address that with council. If you want them to come in and talk about what their plans are with anything, we won't have to do that.
I thought that was sent back to the tower, a month or two.
It was, but now we're waiting for them to okay it. Michael, Michael Wall has been on top of it. Michael, Michael Wall has been on top of it, uh, I saw last couple of weeks and he co-copies me on it, have you taken a look at it, what's the holdup, and then.
That's still the tower fee, Paul.
Yes, yes. I don't, there's no reason why they're not going to approve it, there's everything there, so, back to them, yeah, pushing four years on the stage.
Yeah, we showed it through the house.
And then, I was, oops, sorry about that. Um, I wanted to give, uh, kudos to, I don't know if you've been out to the walking trail, there's a new little pavilion set up out there, it's very nice, Rotary helps to put that together, Corey helped them in location and, and, uh, finding a spot for it and everything, but I know Paul Yoder was a big part of that, Rotary, um, got a couple of local contractors going to finish it, they're going to make it look nice, so, uh, it's a nice addition to the walking trail, a little, uh, over, you know, pavilion, uh, they want some benches, maybe some picnic tables to, to go out and enjoy the walking trail and eat lunch or whatever, and have that, so, I want to thank them for doing that here together and working together, so.
I have one more thing, Conrad Beck wants to know if you want him to come and talk about the new policy.
Not really, it's not going to reduce anything.
It's not worth you to drive from our school to come down to go back home.
Well, it's nearly time to ask.
My flood insurance bill.
Have we, we've had, we've been with Conrad a long time, have we ever shopped it?
No. And when I see you're serious, I'll do it to Cheryl. Diane, I went through it once and it was not worth the pain.
I didn't say anything.
But you're getting ready to.
Do you have the new policy, if anybody wants a copy of it, so you can read it.
All right.
Oh, and we do not have flood or earthquake insurance, F Y I. In case you want to add it.
He just asked for twenty-five years. Before you rush to adjourn, if we stick to topic, I think a five-minute executive session for purchase or sale of property would suffice. But that's all we're talking about. Yes, if we can stick to the topic, I would say five minutes max.
I will second that. He has to do his mayor's report first. I think it is done. Were we not made an exception?
Pay, uh.
Can you add some more stuff to it? I can go more.
I asked, I asked you all if I could talk to, uh, the commissioners about giving us some ground, and y'all said, go ahead, and I'm going ahead to Thursday at ten.
Ten more. All right, thank you.
So, there's a motion for an executive session?
Second, roll call.
Uh, Edley?
No.
Edley, yes.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes. I mean, it should be simple. I mean, yeah. I've been, it's a little bit time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Executive session.
Thank you.